Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regular scheduled work session for August 16th, 2021 at 6:00 AM. Good evening, Mr. Bridge, legislators, council, citizens, cameraman. Welcome, everyone. Mr. Bridge will be the acting clerk for this meeting. We appreciate that. And when you're ready, you can call.
All right, we'll call. We'll just go down the line here. Councilman Cobb?
Here.
Councilman Rodwall?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Here.
Mayor Lowery?
Here.
Councilman Grim?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Agelson?
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski?
Here.
We have seven members present.
Thank you very much, sir. And moving on to the invocation tonight will be done by Councilman Cobb.
Sure has me proud. Give us the guidance to do what's right for our citizens, watch over our military and our first responders, our fire and EMS and our deputies. And in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
.................................
Alrighty, moving on. Action on minutes will be done in regular session. Communications none. City manager's report will be handled in regular session. Comments from members of the public? Alright, moving on. Any reports? None. Resolutions and ordinances will be done in regular session. Down to other business. Legislation discussion. Mr. Bridge, good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council, laymen of the public. Just a quick overview of the legislation. Some of these will be introduced only and then some will actually be actioned tonight as well. So we'll just start with the resolutions. The first one is Resolution 21-15R. That is introduced tonight, but we'll have a public hearing and action on that on 9/7/2021. And that is the CIP for 2022 to 2026. And we'll get a little taste of that here in a little bit when we just kind of do a rundown with council on that. So as far as the ordinances goes, up for voting tonight is ordinance 21-28. That is an ordinance determining to proceed with improvements of certain public streets within the corporate limits of the city of New Carlisle, Ohio by lighting them. The second lineup for action tonight is ordinance 2021-29. That is an ordinance levying assessments for the improvements of certain public streets within the corporate limits of the city of New Carlisle, Ohio by lighting them. The third ordinance we have action on tonight is ordinance 2021-30. That is an ordinance certifying to the Clark County Auditor and authorizing placement on the tax duplicate, certain deliquent utility accounts for collection with real estate taxes. That was tongue twister. We have another ordinance introduced on 8/2 that is up for tonight. That is ordinance 2021-31. That is an ordinance certifying to the Clark County Auditor and authorizing placement on the tax duplicate, certain uncollected nuisance abatement fees for collection with real estate taxes. We also have ordinance 2021-33 that is introduced tonight. And then action on 9/7/21. That is an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of funds of over $20,000 and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of a wood chipper. We have ordinance 2021-34 that is introduced tonight. Public hearing and action on 9/7/2021. That is an ordinance supplementing certain appropriations contained in the New Carlisle City Ordinance 2021-01. Those are supplements for our mayor's court and a few other items. Did I agree now to one with the grass nutrients? Tree collection? I think I did skip that one.
You skipped 2021-32.
Yeah, thank you. So ordinance 2021-31 is introduced on 8/2 of 2021. We do have public in the hearing and action on that tonight. That is an ordinance certifying to the Clark County Auditor and authorizing placement on the tax duplicate, certain uncollected weed and/or grass cutting fees for collection with real estate taxes. And the last ordinance is indicated as 8 with an asterisk by it, meaning that it is introduced, but I just want to run some information with this on council because I will be asking that legislation to die with lack of motion. That particular legislation piece came to us Friday at 3:30. Jake and I really had time to really dig into it, so we wanted to go ahead and put it on for council. Well, over the weekend and this morning, Jake and I both got into it a little bit more. And council is more welcome to vote on it. I just wanted to give you some insight on it. So the state of Ohio sued some people for the opioid crisis that we have in Ohio. Part of that settlement is, you know, we have to pass legislation if we want to be on it. If we, if 95% of the state entities who are involved in that settlement agree to the terms, then we'll get 100% of the cash out coming to New Carlisle. And that is around $24,000. If 95% of people, jurisdiction in Ohio do not support it, then we'll get a 70% payout, which is around $17,000. Here's where I think council should let that go, is once we read the more summary today, it is, depending on what dollar amount you get, but it's earmarked for opioid reduction in your town. And it's also payable over 18 years. So if we get the $17,000, it'd be just over, you know, do the math on it. But then we have to track it and we have to use it for opioid reduction. Since we don't do that in council, I don't have the appropriate staff to really manage them on. So that's something council will have to take into consideration. If it was $17,000, free money, do what you want with it, sign us up for that any day. But the earmark of it is very concerning because we don't have the staff in council to really deal with opioid crises because we really contract out with Clark County for all of that. Yep, and that is all for legislation. We'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Counsel.
Regarding that, is there some way that we can designate the recipient as Clark County so that Clark County would get more?
I didn't, Jake didn't indicate that. We had a lengthy discussion on it. It doesn't seem like any kind of, we could sub grant that or sub receipt it like we could with Harrisville.
It seems like we don't hear that much about overdoses. Is that true, Keith? Have they gone down?
They've rolled a coaster. You know, this month we may have none, next month we may have ten. As deputy can tell, we tend to, it tends to flow whatever, say Dayton had two weeks ago, it'll flow into the Hoover Heights. What they had last week, we'll get this this next week. Our last high batch, we had a batch of cocaine and fentanyl mix. We had, we had three overdoses on.
Mr. Grim, anyone else? I think anybody else has anything, sir.
Okay, awesome.
Alright, moving on. Any other business thing related, counsel? Alright, well, we bet up council to make the motion to move forward.
Are we going to discuss the?
We should do that, shouldn't we? I was switching between screens. Yeah, no, I know. I was switching between screens. I thought, you know, yes. So, Mr. Bridge?
Awesome. So it's that time of year again. So we need to get our capital improvement plan 2022-26 reviewed with council. We are introducing that tonight. It won't be voted on until 9/7, which is a Tuesday, by the way. So everyone knows that. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, not a Monday. So it's going to look a little different. So Ms. Harris actually during our admin meeting presented this fantastic Excel sheet and I ran it. So again, Ms. Harris, I've told you a hundred and billion times, I'm going to do it one more time. Fantastic breakdown of what we need. We feel as though this is a lot more streamlined. You can see multiple departments at once versus, you know, how we did it ton by ton last year with graphs and all that stuff. I don't think we need graphs for this particular thing. I might look at doing that for the actual operating budget. But for our purposes here right now, I think this serves a lot better than having all the fancy fancy stuff. It is very easy to follow. What we did this year is really cleaned up. We had a lot of things in our CIP that we could actually move to maintenance and repair. So anything that you saw in years prior that had to do with repairing a building and repairing a pool or anything that we already have established and we're just doing maintenance to it, we actually took that out of our CIP as our fix, as we are able to. So you're going to see some of these funds that didn't have as much as years prior simply because we're just taking that $12,000 we had out for full maintenance and updating the actual operating budget, full maintenance by the $12,000 because it doesn't need to be capitalized according to our fixed asset plan. So we have a very streamlined and, and not very heavy capital improvement plan for you guys to review. So how we done it years past, just, I'll just start with the departments that I'm responsible for and then we'll go down the line and talk about each of our other departments. Mr. Hutchinson is not feeling well. He's at the city building. He's going to try to come for seven o'clock. So I'll take his section as well. All the sections I'll be talking about aren't too, too heavy. You'll get a little bit more respective if it's your Kiko's departments and then it's Mrs. Harris' department. So city council, technology updates. We don't have anything for you guys until 2025, and that is simply to replace your iPads. If there's anything down the pipe prior to that you guys want, if you want me to look at your new iPads prior to that, let me know. We can start the process. But right now we have you about five years out. I spoke with Jason Hanrahan, who's our IT guy essentially, and he did recommend about a five-year replacement cycle for council iPads just simply because they're not used on the same, the way that we use them as far as we use them a lot for day-to-day operations. And I'm just assuming here that you guys use yours just for council meetings and internet and the app, stuff like that, you know. You get to use it more, be aware and care a lot quicker. But in the meantime, if you notice anything wrong with your iPads, let us know. We can get you replacements. The group as a whole to get new ones, 2025. Again, if you want to move it up back, just let us know. I have your updates, big updates at the same schedule as mine for my big technology update. My iPad, my iPad will hold off a little longer than yours. I may need a desktop down the road or something additional. That's why I put it so far down in 2025 because I'm not sure yet. But I do have small increments in there from a year, like 3,000, 3,500. In this case, I do need to get something on the smaller side. Our capital threshold for purchases is $2,500. So basically, anything's over 2,500 needs certain criteria. We do have to put it on. Any questions over our two funds? Any questions or concerns? Nope. Anything you'd like to see added or taken away? Okay. So we're going down, starting with finance department. Ms. Harris, do you have anything? So with Ms. Harris's apartment, again, we took a lot of things that we could just put in repair and maintenance and put them in the actual operating budget. So we do have quite a few small purchases projected for finance in years past. So our biggest one is our software support, and that's for our software system that we use inside the city building. Now, you'll see small increments on there just because, you know, every year we just assume they're going to raise their prices a little bit. We, we want to be a little over, we want to be under so we can come back and have to mend anything if we're over in the, you know, final year of $93,000. But that is something we have on there every year. It is for our software support. The network server and protection, we did beef that up a little bit. I had a meeting today with Jason Hanrahan. I'm going to be signing, bringing legislation to council here very soon and basically contracting out with the bridge group to do everything that we do for IT, just as a one yearly lump sum, a setting to build all those increments every month. It makes it a lot more easier for us to budget. And we actually need to beef up our network security quite a bit. This year, I could see in the city manager's report, we had a cybersecurity application that goes along with our liability insurance. It's 17 pages long. And the insurance carriers are now getting home with government municipalities because we're the ones that hack all the time. So it asks questions about patches, how much to update backwork, over my head. Jason's going to fill that application out for us. But we need to start beefing up our network security. Of course, it's going to cost money to do that. If we work to get hacked, and what they're telling us now is it's only a matter, it's not a matter of if, it's really a matter of when. So not trying to scare anyone, but that's just the day and age we live in. So we did up that year to pass. I also do have small. Moving on down, computer replacement. It was in the CIP last year to get new computers, so we did, and we got them this year for those. They're waiting to be installed. So we do have them on a five-year replacement cycle too. These are desktop and they are used every day, five days a week, very heavy. So we did put that down 2026. We'll analyze the performance of these computers 2024, 2025, that maybe we'll push back. But as of right now, we do want to keep that five-year replacement cycle. SSI utility upgrade. This is a, basically a pickup back from where we upgraded a few years ago. When we did the office upgrade, due to the financial constraints of the city at that point in time, we left utility, income tax, and Angela, and central cashier out of the upgrade. So we wanted to bring those remaining departments on so we can have a fluid software system across all users in the city building. So now we have someone in VIP, which is our newest, and three of them on old version, which is a DDo. They still communicate, correct me if I'm wrong, manually. So we have to manually go and integrate. By doing that upgrade, it's going to streamline processes and we don't have to do all the. So that's what that charge is for, is it's just a one-time charge for the year. But we also need to take into account the software support. If we're adding those to it, we can assume the software support is going to go up just a little bit as well. So for finance, for year 2022, we have 93 scheduled in capital purchases. That's probably about the average year in and year out. I didn't look at your year past. Yep, other than the upgrade. So, but we, again, we took some other things out that we normally haven't. Any questions or concern with finance? Nope. Okay. So I'm just going down to planning. Citywide enhancements, we, I just, we put some money in there every year, and that's to get flower pots, you know, if we want to get events for downtown, a picnic table somewhere in town, we can do that through the planning department. Right now, we are actually working with Fab Metals to get some brackets made for our street lights downtown, so we can put some hanging baskets up. So that is on the agenda for this year, but we're actually looking to get Fab Metals scheduled to get that done. But little enhancements throughout the year can go a long way. So I think it's very reasonable to put it in there. Drone and related items, that's for 2022. We got $5,000 in there for that. I think it'd be awesome for the planning department to have a drone, the fire department to use it, that's great too. We do need to send Derek in to get his pilot license for that. So that $5,000 charge includes the drone, the license, and everything for that. So I think it'd be great arsenal to have in our kit, you know. So, yep. So that is all we have for planning. Any questions on any of those particular? Nope. Alright, so parks.
He's working for it all. She's trying.
Get us past this page, bud. You can do the rest. Alright, so park, shelter house upgrades, we got $10,000. I think we have some things on the deck for this year still to do with the parking lot and stuff like that. I know this would be a discussion topic. I kind of left it at 10. The council wants to discuss, add more, or more are welcome to. All these funds right here come out of the general fund, so they're not fund-specific as far as streets go to streets. It's got a little bit healthier on there. So shelter house upgrades, we have those in there. I did leave it blank for '22, '23, '24, '25. I don't know, you know, what's going to happen with the new shelter and how much we're going to need to put in here. So we got some time to think about that, clearly we do. If you guys want to talk about upping that 10, that's great. I don't, I don't know if, I don't know what else we need to do as far as we, if we get the outside done. We are working with, get you nice new mics. So if we don't have enough money in 2021 to get that, we can get them out of that $10,000 for this too. But we are working on the mics. Playground equipment, that's to get new playground equipment. So we, I didn't do anything for 2022, but I am, I would like to pick that up in '23 with $35,000. And namely because I don't know where they're creating healthy community grants is, and that's a lot of the grant money that we got flash for all this previous equipment. I haven't heard from the county about that. So it's always best to get bang for your buck. We can partner with an agency that gives you grant money because that playground equipment is not cheap at all. And again, we just have it on a recycle. We have 2024, it goes down to $8,500, $12,000 in 2025, and then 2026 and for new equipment and, yep. And of course, that is nothing to take away from the Parks and Rec boards. We'll definitely partner with them. This is just the fund money for this balance that we can work with and they can piggyback on too. And we would always consult with them about anything we're going to do with new park equipment and stuff like that. Park upgrades, those are general upgrades. We don't have anything for 2022. So I think we're probably good on like our fall protection, et cetera, et cetera. But then we have the basic $3,500 for each year on out. Howie, do we need to put something in for 2022?
We have, we have maintenance facilities.
Oh, yeah. Okay, you're right. Alright. Utility carts, that is $20,000. I do believe, is that a shared expense with streets when I?
This is, this is replaced like the gator, you guys borrow, yeah, we spray, you go drive around with, yeah. The other one's just docked on.
Yep, and that's a 2022 purchase. Then we have bike path equipment that's $8,000 for each year. Goes up to $8,500 in 2024. And that's just basic bike path stuff that we do throughout the year. And then bucket truck, shared expense with street department is $30,000. We really want to get that in 2022. But as we can see, it disappears in there to pass.
Yeah, we did have it in '21, and we've been searching all year for a bucket truck. We had budget for the amount we had, and we couldn't find anything. New tree services are heating everything up, so.
What are you looking at price-wise?
Well, we put in $80,000, and we're hoping that that kind of gets us into something when someone starts to sell out. But it's crazy out there for that type of equipment.
Mr. Cobb?
We talked about doing a driveway out here. Is that going to be included in there?
That's what we're, we've got funds for this year to do that. Yeah. I think, I don't, I can't remember the dollar, but yeah, we're going to be, we're going to be talking about here soon.
Okay, also that will get done this year?
I'm sorry, but.
Trying to get contractors.
Alright, lands and buildings. City garage and tools, $3,000 for 2022. Basically just some roll numbers in there to get them, any tools that they would need that would go over our capital threshold purchase. $35,000 in 2023 for new garage, city garage truck. And then city garage upgrades, I know we've been trying to get this done for quite some time. $40,000 in 2022, $23,000, $20,000 in 2023. We don't have anything for '24 and '25, and then we have $25,000 for 2026. So for lands and buildings in 2022, your total capital expense is looking to be around $43,000.
Any questions on that? I do. Under lands and buildings, that would include the street department hut over here, would it not? It would be under its own street. Okay, never mind. I'll come back to that one.
And then we have, the new one is mayor's court. I'm not, I don't know what to expect with that. I don't think anyone does. So you have something minimal, $5,000 a year, and they're saying we're going to need it. They have some other pressures that I have to get here soon. I think when I get back to the booth, I'll get that. Last half of long section, stuff like that. So this is just miscellaneous things that they would potentially need unforeseen things throughout the year. And I think after we see the first couple of years ago, we'll have a better understanding of what they're going to need from here when they're out. I think the first year is going to be trial and error. But, you know, we'll have some guidance from the two experienced people we have coming in. But until we have a year or two of our own experience, we got to anticipate, unanticipated. Any questions on mayor's court? Okay. The street hut building? The, the street building?
Yeah, the one down.
Oh, the city garage?
The city garage. And that included in there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're going to cut the one section of garage out for leaks and then put a?
Something like a lean-to up?
Yeah, I didn't think it worked. But that's figured in there on this one. Okay.
Is council so good with that? The lean-to, something like that?
It's whatever we're trying to do. We've had like three or four contractors through to look, and they're just, they're swamped with stuff. So we're trying to figure out materials.
Now, when you put the lean-to, where are you planning to put them in the neutral?
Well, there's concrete already down.
No, I mean storage wise, where are you going to put it in the neutral?
Just various equipment that we got, the thoroughpasser, leak machine, just all those trailer.
Do we want to move that fence out?
The water plant fence?
Yeah.
So if we could just demo that and not just lean to, hear me out, Dr. David has that big area right behind the building that already has a fence covered in the front of the pageant. What if we make an offer on that? Let's play it over. Go, go behind the garage. There's another thing I've seen about too, if we can get that front end, could be put new, the ducts like that.
Oh.
You know, something like that. But he already has a concrete area, it's the size, he's got a private.
Wire around the top too, then? No, there's not. We're looking at coverage.
What I was concerned about.
Put a piece around that coverage board, you go with the lean-to, the fence coming down?
It's lean to just from the wall.
Oh, I got it. That's interesting.
If he's going to put equipment at under, if it's not secured some way, it's going to get vandalized.
Yeah, that's what he's clarifying. He's doing log ground.
Yeah, it's just a lean-to with covered.
It's not just the ceiling. Oh, that makes me wonder. But we'll still talk, maybe at the later date about that. Dr. David, Dr. David with?
Yes.
Alright, Howie, you turn on.
Under streets, we have street painting equipment, which we have $9,000 for this year, and that is to replace the curb machine that, you know, we paint all the curves and some of the lines we have. It's a little push thing. It took us almost a day here last week to get repaired again. We've replaced the guts in it, so we think we're due for a new one. I believe this is from the early 90s, this machine, so we're going to get that replaced. And then snowplow, we had moved to '23 because every vehicle we have has a good snowplow. Plus, we have, I believe in the current CIP, a snowplow that sits in the '21 budget. So we're looking to get one that can mount on a couple of different trucks. And then under the next line item, we have bucket trucks, and that is shared parts. So in parts, we have, I believe it was $30,000. And then, and streets, we have $50,000. So right now we have $80,000 for trying to find a, you know, used bucket truck. That's probably more of a 65-foot lift rather than the 40, or 65-foot reach rather than the 43-foot reach we have now.
And next one's emergency capital.
Let me, I got a couple of questions real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. So on, on streets, one, I can't remember if, I thought I heard you mention it before, the, are our snowplows, not the plow itself on the trucks, okay? Like I thought I heard you say something about the 550 while back.
The 550 is going to be coming up soon on a, on repair. We just had a new pump put on it. Engine-wise, I think we're doing well. Transmission-wise, we're doing well. But we'll be planning, I think, sometime, you know, soon, but we just got to repair. It's got, it's got a good plow on it. You know, we try to use the medium duty truck now a little more than what we did with that one.
What about, I think this question come up, actually I think you were going, I don't know if it was Mr. Cook, but what about the street sweeper? Would it be beneficial for us to look at getting one? I know we got the old one back there that's been there since the beginning of time, but I mean, what kind of money are you looking at to use street sweeper, a small one that would need?
Well, we looked at the small ones, the ones like a professional property maintenance has, and they're for parking lots. Almost solely parking lots. When you get into the size that, can't remember the name of the company or the company that we used the last couple of times, they get in a regenerative air, hardly any dust. Obviously, you're well over $100,000. They are a maintenance nightmare. I used to work on that one when I first got here, and it's constantly in the shop. It's like a combine to a farmer. You're working on it nonstop. So most contracts we've been getting are five, six grand per. And I think Randy had mentioned to me that, you know, looking at maybe an extra sweep per year to go to two, for sure. Two sweeps, $10,000. You got 10 years almost of sweeps for the same price as that unit.
Good point.
And you're, even by that time, you're probably already replacing it again.
Yeah, yeah. No, I see them at the, they have them at the shop all the time at the base too. They're always working on them.
And we, we used to work with Clark County to get a little bit of side sweeping back in the day. They quit contracting sweeping totally, just because of the wear and tear. And even City of Springfield, they contracted out the sweeping except for a little bit of stuff, yep.
Do we have another street sweeper coming this year? Or we done? I don't know if we did one yet.
No, we're trying to get one scheduled with the gentleman down in Cincinnati, and it's just a struggle trying to get in a schedule.
And then my last one was on the, the street department building. Can, can we put, can council or wouldn't you think, because I mean, you deal with it, about putting some money into that building, whether it's looking at getting the, getting painted, covered, some fencing up here? Because when you come to town from 571, and we know that building's old with that silver paint that's really rough, could we maybe get a high, you know, privacy fence to wrap it, just to, you know, maybe clean it? I don't know. What do you think? I mean, it's just, it looks rough out there. Is there anything that you had?
Well, no, because we had to start moving all of our, well, a lot of equipment will be going away here soon. We're getting ready to put that on dub deals. That is going to be our spoil pile location for a while now. Madison will be gone, and it will be all grassy. So right now, we're trying to figure out a way to move, move some things maybe down to wastewater and get those out of sight, out of mind for spoiled piles, gravel piles, but.
So you will be putting the piles back behind here?
Yeah, we're putting some right here behind the log cabin, and we're putting some back behind the street department for now. As far as painting, the building, it is galvanized, so we can get, you know, a silver coat of paint probably put on it. Privacy fence?
And that's what I'm asking, what, I mean, do you think it'd be better to throw some paint on it or a fence, you know, like? You know, like, I'm talking about like an eight-foot fence, like you go to Menards, they got there real tall, like, whatever, it's ten, twelve-foot fence. I don't think, I'm just thinking out loud and make it look a little cleaner when you're coming to town.
How much would it cost to paint that?
That's been the same paint on that front was probably fifty years. And it's not rusted, that's the, that's.
Right, it's just peeling and dirty and whitey and.
I mean, the building is way past its useful life, so we have to take that into consideration. So then you have to balance what it looks like to the public. You know, it is a street department, so we have to take that consideration as well. You know, but you just gotta be careful about how much money you put into that building just because of the.
Well, and I'd be interested to see what it looks like once we get some of the equipment.
Yeah.
Out of there.
I mean, and I'll come back to it because it's the first thing you notice, right? It's if you look over, it's there. Especially, you know, do you wanna talk to them though about maybe like down the road, like relocating to the street department? And that's the discussion.
We were looking at trying to get the storage equipment down at wastewater and put them in the same building. And we were looking at, I wanna say around two hundred forty-five or two hundred fifty thousand for basic, a basic whole farm.
Okay.
Um, so house down there. I've kind of put that on hold, one, as I got an engineer coming in this next week to talk to wastewater on possible future upgrades, and they, you know, get rid of chlorine and, because we have chlorine gas down there. And if they say we need some of this area to do this upgrade, then we, and we still have enough room. Yeah, we've been trying to consolidate lease those three departments down to that area. No, we, no equipment, nothing, I don't know what we would do with that area once we would, say, level the quonset hut or whatever, but.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious if you had any plans for it.
Do you, council, does council want some votes on what it would take to kind of do that over there? Or, I'm not trying to leave you hanging, but, I mean.
If you're asking, I would, I would love to see some ideas. I mean, just, you know, fence, you know, for me, a fence and maybe some paint. I mean, I don't know, especially if you're gonna be putting dirt piles back there now.
Where a defense can go, kind of busy like this?
You'd have to go parallel with, uh, five seventy-one.
So it would have to be open, coming, if someone needs the, the city guys coming out the back trying to get down that little walk, driveway, they would have to physically open the gate?
No, I'm, well, I mean, the way I'm thinking is more or less a U, like if you're, you know. This is the front of the building where everybody pulls in, and this is five seventy-one, just put a U around it, or, or at least around maybe part of it, which poses the question.
Yeah, the thing with that is if someone's back there, you have, so you're enclosing a space that has a lot of, you know, potential set options. I mean, put a fence there, once someone's behind the fence, it's done. So is it possible to kind of figure out where we're gonna put these piles and do like a privacy U around just that area where it's. Where you dump the stuff, maybe? Not like where you had to do it with dumpsters, you know? What's a dump, what's a dump?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, install it in the future maybe.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Kiko.
All right, moving on, emergency ambulance capital, fire team. Uh, they seem to be in a good mood today, so just add, add whatever you want to it, bud.
What?
That's what they're in a good mood today, add whatever you want to it.
New engine. Salary's about twenty-two dollars an hour would probably help a lot. Uh, okay. Emergency ambulance, um, under twenty, uh, two thirteen. Uh, fire station renovation, demolition, fifteen thousand. And also remember, uh, we split all of our funds in between ambulance and fire. There's very few things that can't go under both. But it's just the way our levy money is split, we have to separate in between fire and, or EMS and fire. Fire station renovation, demolition, the demolition part of that is for the old substation. Uh, air packs, sixty thousand, and, uh, new computers, three thousand. And then in twenty-three, we have fifty thousand for a new air compressor. That compressor's not your standard air compressor for like filling tires, that type of thing. It's for filling the S C B A bottles. It has to be a separate special type of air compressor, and it's inspected twice a year and sampled and all that good stuff. Um, and then going on down, air packs again in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six. Our air packs right now are, are three cycles out, which means they're over twenty years old, which they need to be replaced. And, um, we are putting in grants for that, but grants aren't guaranteed. So we have them in the budget. If we was to get the A F G grant for the air packs, uh, we would only be responsible for ten percent of that. Um, that brings that to seventy-eight thousand. Then going down into fire, fire capital, uh, saving back one hundred thousand per year. We've been doing that to save back for a new engine, uh, twenty twenty-two and then twenty twenty-three. And then start hopefully to spec that engine out, and hopefully we will have at least if not over half, if not more. Uh, right now, a new engine, just stock off, uh, built off the line with no equipment on it is anywhere between four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand. Just for the engine itself. That doesn't even include the ladders on the side of the truck. So.
City should start building fire trucks themselves.
Good little side gig.
Uh, then next, uh, new structural fire gear, the bunker gear for the firefighters, twenty-five thousand this year. And we've added a thousand each year following twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, just for the simple reason of, of cost increase. Right now, a new set of bunk gear here for one firefighter is right around thirty-five hundred dollars. And those have to be replaced every ten years, no matter what their condition, by N F A guidelines. Tools and equipment, fifteen thousand, and then again, the fire station renovation, demolition, fifteen thousand in the fireside also. New computers and equipment, three thousand, that's, uh, buy new desktop computers and that type of thing for the, uh, training office and for the assistant chief's office. And then air packs again, sixty thousand. For us to buy enough air packs right now to outfit the department, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty, if not more, uh, thousand dollars to buy the air packs. And that comes with one air pack, two spare, two, one, two cylinders, which are the air, air cylinders themselves, and one mask. And then we would also be purchasing probably extra masks to go along with that. That brings up that up to one hundred and eighteen thousand. Like I said, they're going across again in twenty twenty-four, buying more air packs. And again, like I said, we, um, put in for the, we are putting in for the grants for that. We're also putting in a grant for A F G grant for the, a new engine. And again, we'd be only responsible for ten percent if we was to get that. Um, air pack grant, I think we're in a good shape to get that if it goes through. Uh, but grants are shot in the dark. Depends on who's reading the paperwork at the time. And it's one of those things that they see one thing that they don't like on our packet, they don't call and ask us about it, they just automatically get it out of the process. We have hired a grant writer to do our grant writing. We found that that's the best way to go about it because it is so complex. Um, and that brings us down at the end to three hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars.
So the, I'm sorry.
No, no, that three seventy-two five is also including streets and police.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good. Just wanted to correct that for the record.
Chief, trust me. How many people have you lost so far this year on the E M S side?
On the E M S side, how many personnel have I lost? I've lost four in the past four months, five months. Uh, one of those I'll regain when she's done with her probationary period at Huber. Uh, the other one chose to go to Dayton due to, um, full-time position, basically. Um, and the other one left to, uh, you know, for two other things, and I lost one by us releasing him.
And also, you lost them due to money, right? Not being paid high enough?
That's part of the issue right now, yeah. That's one of the discussions that, uh, Mr. Bridge and, and Ms. Harris and all of us have been, been having. Uh, it's across the board, not just us. Um, Duffel Park, Duffel Miami, Pike, even full-time fire departments right now are hurting people. Uh, fire service as a whole is, it's getting, it's getting bad.
I mean, we need to, as, as council, and, excuse me, and as the city, we need to find out a way of increasing their money to try to keep personnel instead of losing them going somewhere else for money.
To do that for all city employees?
Huh?
All city employees need to be addressed that.
Well, I mean.
But you're right.
Yeah, but we gotta find a way to increase the, the pay so we don't lose people. And I know the sheriff having same trouble.
Right now, we're, right now, in our, in our local area, we are the lowest paid department.
But I mean, we've gotta find a way to keep people, but I don't know how, but other than maybe increasing their pay because some other departments are doing the same thing.
Right, it, it's, and like Mr. Bridge said, it's, it's a chess game. We, uh, they, uh, we, uh, they, uh. Uh, but also too, on the same hand, if I got a person, which I do, I have several people that work for me, that also work for Duffel Park, also work for Duffel Miami. Uh, my son, matter of fact, he works for me, for Duffel Park and for Duffel Miami. That's why a lot of people earn their living, work in here for different part-time departments. Um, but say I have an open hole today, the other department has an open hole today, they're gonna go to the other department and pick that open hole up because they make more money. And you can't blame them for that. That's what, you know, they have to look at their finances also. Um, but like I said, it, it's a, it's a problem across the board.
That's why I was saying, we need to look at as council and along with the city, we can increase the pay here.
Right, and like I said, that's.
All employees.
That's, only we, uh, Ms. Harris and Ms. Bridge, we've been having meetings about looking at. Matt, we've even looked at a long-range five-year plan of, of actually what I feel the city needs to start really seriously looking at within the next five years of putting money up to where we can start hiring full-time firefighters. If you're offering somebody versus a part-time job to a full-time job with benefits, I think we're gonna be a lot better off. And that, you know, that may take raising our levy, you know, that type of thing.
It's gonna take raising it, like, you're gonna need to actually show this to the school about way more than what they know. It's significant. I just don't think it's a number, I don't have it in my eyes, but it is a lot. Another option that council should look at too, we barely discussed, we've talked about it a little bit, is you may have to give up the role of fire department with the version of Duffel Park.
Say it again?
Merging with Duffel Park. No, I, I, I'm not, Duffel Park, if you're watching, I'm not saying do I do that tomorrow. But down the road, that's how these departments are really scoring forces, and they're, they're merging. Because it's, it's a, it's a, it's sad to sit back and watch these things professionals develop. But hey, we got a fantastic guy running our place, I'm sure we'll, we'll weather the storm very well.
You know, and it, it's a roller coaster, it goes up and down, so that, you know, it's, and I think right now, fire service as a whole is in a down, a down spiral. Um, and, you know, I know I've said it before, but the, the patri thing of, of nine eleven, when everything happened and firefighters were, you know, everybody looked at us as, oh my God, look what happened. Um, that's kind of gone because the kid that got hired at New York City Fire Department the day after nine eleven retires this year. Twenty years and out.
Yeah. Anyway, your reason I bring this up, I don't want to lose you as a chief.
Well, I'll be honest with you, no matter what, unless, unless the city or the council or Mr. Bridge decides that I'm not personally be in this seat anymore. I'm not going anywhere. I don't give up, I don't quit.
That's a question. It's been a while ago, you gave us a comparison of our firefighter pay compared with other communities.
Yes, sir.
Do you still have that? Can you get it out?
I can give it to you off the top of my head. We're paying fourteen dollars, uh, fourteen dollars an hour for a paramedic. We're paying thirteen twenty-five dollars, uh, thirteen twenty-five an hour for an E N T. Uh, Duffel Park is paying sixteen, going to seventeen this next year for a paramedic. Um, Duffel Miami is paying sixteen, going to seventeen, and Pike Township is paying fifteen, going to sixteen.
You got that in?
Oh, yeah.
You got that in a form?
You want me to recite them back to you?
You got that, you got that in a form somewhere?
Excuse me?
You got it in a form, digital form?
I can get, I can get it for you, and, uh, because every year, not just me, but all the chiefs in the area, we all kind of get together. Hey, what are you paying this year? What are you going to go to the next year? You know, that type of thing. We, yeah, all the chiefs in the area, it's, the old days of my department, you know, you know, it's not like that. We're very much, we're trying our best to work together, uh, especially me and Chief King. Uh, we have a really strong, good working relationship, uh, to be able to talk things over, not just manpower, but, you know, salaries, equipment, everything else.
How long has the fire levy, how, how long has it been the same amount?
Uh, we did a renewal.
When we got the levy, when we got our levy, we went from twelve dollars an hour to fourteen dollars an hour for a paramedic. We went from paying, uh, E N Ts to eleven twenty-five to thirteen twenty-five.
But the levy, the levy is the same milli.
Uh, the levy was over almost three, almost three years ago. But it's, our levy is due to renew, uh, on the ballot in twenty twenty-two.
You have multiple levies, you're firing in that department, some are continuous, but actually, you are, and if you have your one that's renewal. So that's gonna collect through twenty twenty-two, and then we'll put it on account in twenty twenty-two.
So that's been the same milli for quite a while?
Uh, it's been the same milli, the same milli, up until we put this, the one we currently have, with the additional one we are on that. But was the same, and the one, the one that gets renewed in twenty twenty-two added milli to do that. So really, that was the twenty seventeen, so that is the same milli.
And yet labor costs will go up faster than for that.
Would council like to see the wage study for all city employees or just the fire, E M S department?
All city employees.
And, and honestly, as Mr. Bridge said, it's not just a problem that's, that's solely to the fire department. You can talk to any, uh, police, uh.
Any public.
Food, food industry, any, any industry you look at right now is having a hard time, uh, getting people to work. You know, when you're seeing different companies and different businesses closing early or whatever, they just don't have to work.
I see that all over, Miami County Sheriff has, uh, billboards. Every school you pass in the entire area now hiring bus drivers.
Right. Uh, Ohio Patrol, their, their, their patrolman, Ohio State Patrol, they're going out at twenty-seven years now.
They're what?
Leaving after twenty-seven years.
They're going out? Leaving West Springfield?
No.
No, retiring, retiring.
Ohio State Patrol, they're leaving the, the service at twenty-seven years. I know more about fire and, and, and law enforcement, because that's, we, we kind of tag teamed together, and I see a lot more about that. But like I said, it's, it's bad all over, it really is. We're not the only one in the boat, we're, a bunch of us are trying to row it together. And I, I don't, I, do I agree that our salaries need to go up? I give drastically, they do need to go up. But do I think money is the answer? No.
But it helps.
It helps.
But it is. Um, and you get, you have another example, we hire seasonal employees all, all, every year to cut grass. Um, this year took us about two and a half months to buy one, to sit on that lawn and cut grass. Um, this is to give you an idea of what the market's like, I mean, it's, it's bad.
It is?
Well, I may try even more, what other than money? What other than money is.
Benefits.
Huh?
Benefits.
Tuition reimbursement.
You know, and, but also too, you look at, um, I've got several, you know, people in the department that were full-time departments, other departments, like my assistant chief, Jeff Gallagher, is a third-generation firefighter, lieutenant with, uh, Huber. They're, you know, they were wanting to hire, fill five slots. And they were even willing to accept lateral moves, which is something, someone moving from one fire department to another fire department. Um, and started out with only sixteen applicants. That's unheard of. Normally, you have five app, five openings in a fire department, you'll have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty, uh, applicants for it. They had six, they had sixteen, they lost eight of those for the first round, but they lost the, uh, uh, either background check or whatever. They ended up down to three, and none of those three were able to accept the positions.
Let me, um, jump in real quick, because I wanted to ask you a quick question, chief, before we get moving forward. So we, on the, um, where'd it go? Fire station renovation and demolition, so I'm assuming that fifteen grand is to cover what, the demo of the, of the old, um, substation? And to put down a, uh, blacktop, or is that just for demo?
We hope between the, the two, two funds, six, fifteen thousand in each would cover all of it. We, I've got a phone call, I did call, uh, companies to give us a, a estimate on blacktopping. Uh, Mr. Kiko was able to give me the, uh, sets, what I, what we would need as far as gravel inches and blacktop inches. And I have not received anything back from them, and they came out to give us a big dip.
Do you think, should the, should the, should the fire department pay for the demo of that building? Do you think, should the, should the, should the fire department pay for the demo of that building? I'm just asking. I thought I was thinking. I mean, well, I guess it is the city.
Right, it is the city building. It's not the fire department building.
Since it was, since it was police substation, shouldn't it be the police stuff?
Right.
No offense.
No?
Just mudding the water.
You all right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So...
Council, can I interrupt real quick since she's here? Um, Deputy Megan Forrest wanted to introduce you guys to. She's gonna be your third shift, uh, New Carlisle Deputy. It's gonna be working midnight, so she's out currently field training with Deputy, uh, Eubanks. They're assigned to Area One today, so Park Lane, New Carlisle, so if we're able to stop them, I just wanted to introduce you guys to.
Awesome. Great. Thank you for stopping by and welcome.
I sat in for the interview of her and I am so glad you are here. You are awesome and I look forward to working with you even more.
Yeah, your fire department. So is that something we can address, um, as far as changing or looking at another option? Since the, the fire department is running so tight, could the demo of that building be paid for somewhere else?
It's gonna come out of your general fund.
Right.
I mean, they're gonna be using the land afterwards or they just pay something? And they actually utilize, then utilize and drive, so, you know? Fifteen thousand, thirty thousand in a fund, not be fixed. Um, but they do have a vested interest in that, um, so, I mean, if you want to take one out of one of them and have the general fund take fifteen thousand of it?
I just think, I mean, my opinion, I mean, I know we've talked about the general fund's healthy and, you know, the fire department stressing with, you know, these old air packs and, you know, personnel issues. If we can save them a buck, I think it would be a smart move. I mean, I know it's not gonna change the, your, your pattern of, of employment, I don't think, but I mean, a nickel's a nickel in my opinion.
It is, but the fire and EMS department also too are the, the two departments that are more likely going to get grant money to help out with stuff. Um, ultimately, the council, the council say, um, I think they should have to pay something towards it, if you guys want to take, move towards general fund, that's fine. It's not a big deal.
General fund pays for the demo.
And you pay five dollars, so you can risk. I'm sorry. I'm okay with that.
What is it now? I didn't hear that.
General fund pays for the demo and then the fire department plays, pays for making a parking lot, a blacktop.
Okay, so I will need a motion to move fifteen thousand to lands and buildings of the general fund. Hold on, hold on. Emily made me a cheat sheet. Casinos, I struggle.
As she's sending in her field of flowers. As she's sending in her field of flowers.
Now, did you see that green space walking? All right, so this is going in, is, is the motion going?
Don't move.
Okay. So it's to move fifteen thousand out of, fire team, what, you want it out of EMS or fire?
Uh, EMS.
Ms. Harris, final say?
He had it split.
Well...
It's two.
Can we split it and just do seventy-five hundred in each one?
You guys agree with that?
Yeah.
And then move fifteen?
Yeah.
I like that. All right, so the motion is to move fifteen thousand, no, move seven thousand five hundred of demo, fire state, substation, the old substation demo. Move from each, uh, was it under capital, fire capital?
Emergency ambulance operating.
And then, uh...
Two one three.
And then what's it?
Uh, fire operating.
Two one five before.
Uh, two one five.
Then move, add fifteen thousand to lands and buildings. And two thousand, one oh one, two thousand. Okay, I'm gonna read it for the record. So the motion on the floor, that was, uh, initiated, initiated by Councilman Eagleson?
Ms. Eagles, Ms. O'Kowski. Second by Mr. Grimm.
Okay, so the motion is to, uh, move seven thousand five hundred of, um, seven thousand five hundred for, uh, the demo of the old substation from each emergency ambulance capital. I mean, operating two one, fund two one three, and then fire.
Two one five.
Operating two one five. Then we're gonna take that amount, which is equal to fifteen thousand, and move to two lands and buildings in the general fund, uh, fund number one oh one, dash two thousand. Corrected first by Councilwoman O'Kowski, second by Councilwoman Grimm. So we'll start with a vote with, uh, Councilwoman Eagleson. Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilman Rogal?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Cook? Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Eagleson? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman O'Kowski?
Yes.
And Councilman Grimm. Yeah. All right, measure passes, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, with us two minutes away, do we want to pick this back up, uh, the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we will end this meeting and continue on in, in regular session. Counsel?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Eagleson, second by Mr. Grimm to adjourn.
Helen, are you taking these notes down there? Crap, I forgot his clerk passing. Okay, who was the first? Sorry.
Uh, Ms. Eagleson motion and Mr. Grimm second.
All right, so we'll just start with, uh, Councilwoman O'Kowski?
Yes.
Councilman Rog, uh...
You, you.
Councilman Rogal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Yes.
And Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eagleson?
Yes.
And Councilman Grimm? Yes. All right, six fifty-nine, we are adjourned.